Best wifi again.
You can sign in to the... With your NSCSD email?
I'm not so hairy on the sides. I don't shave because I'm lazy. That's it, I mean. They corrected the severely deviated septum. I'll be yolk her home this morning. That's right, every time I turn mine on, it's like... Oh, haven't plugged this one in in a while, dang. And I did the speed limit. Let me guess, you're an Ohio State fan?
How's your wife doing, all right?
Yeah, hers... Kind of put her foot up every now and when she gets home. Yeah, but she went back to work too early. And she just felt like she stayed out, she'd be so far behind when she... Oh, that's right, if you buy with a purchase, you get free coffee.
Made a mess.
D-O-U-G-H-N. I don't drink this stuff. I could never get it past my lips. I used to fix... When the special shooting first started hitting the states, they were all made... Syracuse area could fix them. Yeah, because like, not because I can read Spanish or Italian, it's just like I can read schematics, but...
Okay. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Ian Huggins, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Eric Meisner, a graduate and employee of the North Syracuse Central School. Diane Evans, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central. Okay, we're going to begin with proclamation for Food Service Appreciation Week. Proclamation, then we'll adopt it as a board, hopefully. The North Syracuse Central School District Food Service Staff have contributed to the health and educational development of our district's children by making nutritious breakfasts and lunches to help students improve grades, increase attention, reduce absence and tardy rates, and improve behavior. Food Service Staff continues to make positive changes in order to provide nutritional meals that meet the dietary guidelines for Americans. And our dedicated group of professionals, to honor the Food Service Staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, excuse me, accomplishments on behalf of the children who attend our schools, I, Paul Farfali, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, and for the Board, address our deepest gratitude and proclaim the week of October 5th, 2020 through October 9th, 2020, as Food Service Appreciation Week, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Make a motion for that proclamation, if I get a second. Ebt tree. All in favor? Oppose, and that is carried. We have something here, but we can't right now. Okay, thank you. We have a social-emotional learning presentation.
Good evening. This presentation would have been presented by Lisa Goldberg, who is the Director of Social-Emotional Learning. She is observing the religious holiday.
You is, we are going to...
Serving the holiday with my family. But I did want to update you on where things are with... If you'll permit me, I'll do this virtually, as most of us are living much of our lives these days virtually. So I'll go ahead and share my screen and... So when last we met, we talked about the mission for this work. And our working mission right now, before we convene a team, and I'll be talking about that shortly, is to equip our students and staff with the skills needed to manage their emotions, form and maintain relationships, and make healthy decisions. You'll remember that the metaphor is a backpack, that we want to equip our kids to venture out and adventure in the world, knowing that they have all of their core competencies, as evidenced by the CASL, that's the Collaborative for Academic Social-Emotional Learning, five core competency wheel. And you'll remember that the wheel is comprised of two self-sustaining competencies, those of self-awareness, to other related competencies, social awareness and relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, which brings all of those competencies together. And we'll remember that these rings around the core competencies really are there to remind us that these core competencies happen everywhere in our district, in classrooms, in schools, and they spill out into the homes and communities wherein our curriculum and instruction, our practices, our policies, and how we partner with families. The goals of our work in our system, related to SEL, are to create a coherent SEL system that builds infrastructure to teach, support, and sustain development of these five core competencies, and also meets the New York State Mental Health and SEL requirements. Also, another goal is to develop a shared understanding of and vocabulary for and practices infused with SEL across our system. We want to foster and grow family and community partnerships, and we're looking to design success criteria and formulate SEL measurements that include short, medium, and long-term outcomes. So where we... I wanted to update you very quickly on our summer. You'll be happy to know that we provided several sessions of staff wellness and self-care, along with trauma-informed classroom practice. Well-attended, and in fact, the presenter, Monica Baycott, had to enlarge the number of slots in these sessions, and there were multiple sessions. We also offered zones of regulation for elementary teachers. This is really a system to help young students identify their failing states so that they can make choices around their behavior. We also engaged in some mental health literacy for PE professional learning. You may recall that for about the last 18 months to two years, we'd had a team of PE teachers and... ...negatively, on the state mandate for mental health literacy. And in our district, we made the choice to use PE as a backbone for the bulk of the mental health literacy, because every student in the district has to take FAZED every year. And there's a natural and organic fit between the PE curricula and the mental health literacy. And so, after about 18 months of working on how these standards would show up in PE curricula, our small team of PE educators held specific trainings for elementary, middle, junior high, and high school PE. So we're very excited that that work is happening underway. There were also three book studies. One was Permission to Feel by Dr. Mark Brackett of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. We'll be talking about that a little later. Another book was Better Than Carrots or Sticks by Smith, Fisher, and Fry, which is Restorative Practices for Positive Classroom Management, and Lost at School, which really is looking at a more supportive approach to discipline. All of these books, these book studies were well-attended, and the work will be moving forward. I also wanted to make you aware of something that happened on opening day. We had an opening session on social-emotional learning. As you know, SEL is the highest priority for our students and our... Our opening day reflected that. I wanted to also introduce you to SEL Central, which is a site that we've created that is really going to be a warehouse for everything SEL. Everything from what is it and how do I teach it, to it will house our opening day information, which essentially, people could choose their own adventure. And there were four curated pages of abundant information, and people could choose what they needed to explore. And so whether it was self-care, creating a connected community classroom with a focus on relationships, looking at routines and procedures, and how SEL could be part of routines and procedures, or just some ideas to get started. People spent their time, after an initial welcoming video for the work, exploring what they needed. And so, if you were looking for ideas in your first few days or weeks, there were several to choose from. If you were looking for self-care, again, several to choose from. And I wanted to also point out that we had staff fill out a Your Feedback Matters survey, and we had the prompt at the beginning and the end of the page to try to ensure that folks would attend and fill it out. And we had pretty good turnout, 490 staff replied, and the feedback, the data, was shared in this week's weekly star. So it was really well-attended, and I think this kind of two-way communication, where we survey and then respond with what we're going to do about data showed us needs to be done, I think is the direction we're really looking to... So this year, we're going to have two core folk I, if that's the word, when it comes to SEL. One is on relationship building, and one is on development of the five core competencies, both in adults and students. But this year, we're really going to be focusing on helping expand their learning and capacity. Talk about that more in a minute. Also wanted to update you on a couple of pieces of infrastructure. And again, the two principles are guiding us. One is this idea of how do we have consistency across districts while still allowing buildings, the agency, to make some modifications based on the needs of their own students, staff, or building community? So that's one guiding principle. And another is, we want to be sure to use evidence or research-based practices so that we are getting the most leverage we can out of everything that we're doing. So there are several things I want to put on your radar. First of which is suicide safety documentation. In the wake of the loss of two students last year, we were able to connect with the Suicide Prevention Center of New York, and through a grant, we were able to work with Pat Brew, who is the Director of School and Youth Initiatives, and she did several pieces of work with us. The first is that she provided staff to train every district. She trained up some of our staff, and also provided trainers, to ensure that every single building in our district was trained. She also helped us by providing training in a training called Helping Students at Risk for Suicide, which essentially helps mental health professionals look at the assessment, intervention, and follow-ups for our school-based practitioners. And out of that came the need to really relook at how we document our suicide safety procedure. We solicited some volunteers from our mental health staff and put together a team who has worked from the middle of March and now, right now, putting together this suicide safety documentation, both protocol and actual paper trail. And it has been vetted both by Pat Brew, and she has guided us through the work, as well as Kate Reed from BNA. And this documentation will be headed your way in the next week or two. We're just putting the final touches on it, and we are... To say super excited is an understatement. We are just really grateful that we had the opportunity to do this work, and more importantly, to have this protocol in place for the safety of our students. Because our work with Pat Brew was so successful, she has invited us to engage in some work, again, grant-funded, around some crisis planning. And not only looking at what kind of a district-level crisis team we have, but what do the teams look like in the buildings, and how do we operate? So that when tragic or untoward events happen, we literally have something that's codified. Our building crisis teams know, our building staff know what to expect, and it's predictable, reliable, and we can spend less time focused on what to do, and more time on the doing of it. Moreover, it will be consistent, as well as provide agency for buildings. So that work will begin... We're also engaged in a disengagement outreach protocol. During our time during COVID last spring, we noticed that it was very challenging to reach some disengaged students and their families. And buildings worked diligently on trying to interact with students and families, and to reengage students. But there were not practices that were consistent, and we did not have consistent documentation of what steps were made. And so actually, next week, a team will be brought together to build a... Let me take a step back. There was a team of mental health providers that came together to kind of create a draft plan of three phases of outreach. One is by the teacher, one is by a mental health professional, and one ultimately would be by a school building leader if there was no contact made, and reasons. So this kind of three-step process came out, and it was brought to District Steering Committee, and Don Marie Thornton, our data queen, had a genius idea, which is, why don't we capture this data in a form on school tool? So that'll be consistent across the district, and it'll be a place for buildings to chronicle how they've worked to reengage students. And it will, again, provide consistency around a shared, consistent place to store things, and the school tool will outline a consistent process, but will allow buildings to customize and include what they're already doing that's working in terms of reengagement. So this is, again, super exciting. As a companion piece to our interfacing SEL Central, which is for staff, we have a family wellness page on our school site. And what's very fabulous about this is that we have several different pages for families, and they look very, very similar to our staff-facing pages, but these would be resources for parents. So, you know, we tried to include articles and videos and all kinds of things that would be useful for families. We tried to pick topics that were really resonant for families and helpful. And so this will be a place for families to turn... Contacting your counselor. We have all of our counselors listed by school and by name. We really want to make it as easy as possible for families to interface with our counselors. So where we are going, very excited about this. Again, and I've said it, I'll say it again, everything we're going to do is evidence and research-based. There's no point of investing our time and energy and resources in stuff that is not going to get us where we want to go. And so I thought we'd begin with the dream, if you don't mind. Ultimately, what we want to build is a system that looks remarkably like this, that in a high-functioning systemic and systematic SEL system, school-wide system, every school would have explicit SEL instruction, SEL integrated with academic instruction, youth voice and engagement, supportive school and classroom climates, authentic family partnerships, a focus on adult SEL, aligned community partnerships. And I just want to call your attention to something. It is not a mistake that the family partnerships, the focus on adult SEL, and the community partnerships are dead center here, because without getting all of the adults on board, it's a big lift. So sort of stick a pin in that, because we will come back to that. Three other indicators of school-wide SEL is that there's supportive discipline, and that we engage in systems for continuous improvement. And lastly, there's a continuum of integrated supports, so that every student is supplied with and supported by what they need. And again, we are looking to build something that marries our... If the yellow square is consistency, and the burglar king, have it your way, is agency, look how harmonious these are. They are pleasing to the eye, and they work beautifully together. So according to CASL, there are four focus areas. The first of which is broken into two. We need to first start by building foundational support and creating a plan. And notice number two is strengthening adult SEL before we move on to SEL for students, and then seek to hone our practice and continue to grow by a cycle of continuous improvement. So focus area one will make sure that we are building awareness, commitment, and ownership, so we're getting buy-in. We have district and building-level teams. We are providing foundational learning opportunities for leaders, teams, and staff. And we are building ways to communicate between all stakeholders and across the district. The second part of focus area one involves creating a shared plan. So we will have a shared vision, both at the district and building level. We will be doing a needs and resource assessment and setting goals. And we will make sure that we begin to plan forward and budget for what we will need to provide high-quality SEL-related activities. Our focus area on strengthening adult SEL means that we start at the top. We start with our central office, and again, this is CASL. This is not Goldberg, this is CASL. And until unless we start with district leaders, everything springs from Cabinet and the Board. And so, working toward that, and then designing and implementing a scaffold of professional learning in SEL for all staff, where we are embedding these practices and competencies into everything we do. And our norms and agreements promote trust, community, and collective efficacy, and we are dedicating time for staff to build community. That this community building is not a luxury, and it's not a marginalized item. It is absolutely germane to this work. So, a year ahead, because, so to just go back a second. So here are the four steps. I'm positing that we are going to focus on one and two this year. Sorry, I didn't make that clear before. So, the actionable steps that we believe we can take toward this. Again, creating a district-wide SEL committee. At next month's DSC meeting, I'm going to put forth a proposal to create a district-wide SEL committee that has representation from all stakeholder groups, including parents, including students, including community organizations, as well as all in-district personnel. We want to support buildings in making SEL a focus and building their SEL team and that team's capacity. We are going to take some risks with creating two-way communication, more surveys and responses, maybe some blogs, video diaries, I don't know. I think this is a year to experiment and to really use the technology and the genius of our instructional technology coaches to make tools that really help us communicate better. We're going to provide opportunities for adult SEL in every way we can. This year, I'm very excited to share that four elementary schools, Smith, Rocks, Bear, and Lakeshore, will be doing the BIMAS Behavior Screener this year. A long road for the very first time, a secondary building. 100 students at CNS will be in a pilot of this screener. And this screener is looking for all kinds of behavior, both demonstrable behavior, the pieces we can see, and internal behavior, anxiety, depression, suicidality, the things we can't see. So very excited to roll this out and have it inform innovative strategies. And lastly, Dan has agreed to a book study for Cabinet. And the book that I've selected is Dr. Mark Brackett's book, Permission to Feel. And I want to give you a quick overview. He is the Director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and he is known for, as a creator of Ruler, which is a system to help students recognize, understand, label, and express their feelings, and then... and then make choices around them. So I wanted to show you this very brief video.
When you're looking at the English Dictionary, there's about 2,000 words to describe human emotional experience. Most of you use about three. People say things like, "No one cares how you feel," or "I've never had an emotional education." "I don't know the words." We have created a culture where building the vocabulary for our inner lives is not addressed. Our culture, our schools, our environments are not preparing people to really become more self-aware. So we believe that emotions matter for five kind of big reasons. The first is attention and capacity, that how we feel is driving whether that we are engaged or curious in a classroom. Emotions matter for decision-making, that how we feel colors the way we see the world and influence the choices we make. Emotions matter for relationships. Emotions are signals to approach or to avoid. They add up for mental and physical health. If we don't attend to our feeling states with healthy strategies, our emotions are going to, in many ways, destroy our health. And then finally, emotions matter just for everyday creativity and innovation and performance. Unless we have the strategies to deal with disappointments and the frustrations, we likely won't be able to achieve our dreams. Every student deserves the permission to feel all emotions. And I'm working towards a future where emotions are a part of the way leaders lead, teachers teach, students learn, and families parent their children. So I think we're finally getting to a place in our nation where we are giving feelings permission to be part of the curriculum. And to me, that is a dream come true.
So this book is, is, I think, one of the most profound learning experiences I've had. And in my estimation, I believe this is the work. If we give kids the power to, to understand what they're feeling, they can make choices around what they do with those feelings. And that is a skill they can take everywhere they go in their lives. And so it is, I think, just a profound gift that we can give to them. I could almost cry, I feel so passionate about it. So I wish I were there to answer your questions and, and to see you and to, to see your reaction. Unfortunately, I'm not. But please feel free to reach out and email me. And I wish you a beautiful meeting and a Happy New Year. And as the Jewish people say, Shanaatsova, Happy New Year. We all deserve a happy, healthy New Year going forward. So be well, and, and I'll see you soon. Take care. Bye.
Again, Lisa wanted to be here. As you can see, her presentation is very thorough, and there is a solid plan where we want to move the district. And again, we'll be going back to district steering and speaking with the group and formulating a district-wide committee. But again, we want to make sure that when students go through the system, that they understand how to recognize their feelings, how to convey them, who is available to help and support, not only them, but the families in our community. And we do have community agencies also looking to help us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And as Lisa said, I mean, feel free to reach out to her and email her with any questions or comments about her presentation. We have a technology update. Looks like Mr. Keegan is going to provide that for us. Thank you. He's going to disinfect.
Let me just say that with the start of school, we're all painfully aware of how important technology is and, and what a vital role it's playing in this new, new environment. And Dan and Cabinet chatted a little bit, and they said, hey, let's, let's give the board an update on, on what we're seeing in technology and what's, what's happening. And so consider this, you know, a little snapshot, little view of what, what's going on in technology as we, as we embark down the school year. And please interrupt me if you have questions. I think what we wanted to, wanted to start with was, so what's new? And, and the answer to that is lots of things are new, and therein lies one of the challenges. These are just a few things that we, we put on here. Some, most of what you're seeing up there was added in an attempt to make student and teacher lives easier. But as with anything else, when you add new things, it, it has its short-term pain and long-term gain. So ClassLink, you may know what this is, but what it basically is, it's a jump-off point for all the software that we use. So you have, you can have a single sign-in, and our teachers and our students can use ClassLink to launch a variety of apps and, and accessing resources, all one-stop shopping. And so that's been, that's, that's been a key tool in the environment we're in right now. EdPuzzle, this just standardizes the way K-12 teachers deliver their video lessons and allows students to access personalized video in a, in a safe environment. Seesaw, Seesaw's been around for a while. We've used the, the free version. We licensed the new, or I should say the, the more expensive, or I should say the, the paid version because it had some great features to it. And this is really a, a really engaging platform for students and families and really helps the learning process. You know we've been using Zoom. I'll add to this, this is how quick this is changing. We've also been using Google Meets. And Google, it's interesting because if you went back a couple of months ago, we were loving Zoom, and we felt, you know, we're Google people, so we want it, we were rooting for Google. But, but Google Meets just didn't have all the features. But they've just, you know, done a great job playing catch-up and added a lot of features. And we got an announcement, it's actually funny, John Correa texted me this morning. A press release came out saying that Google Meets, the free version that we're currently using, was going to limit us to 60 minutes of sessions. Well, if you're in a block schedule over 60 minutes, well, I was like, wow, that's a game changer. We weren't planning on that. So today, we pulled the trigger on licensing Google Meets, which about half of our teachers are using, licensing it so that they get the new features plus the extended time. But so video conferencing rolled out a lot of new things, and, and people are really becoming proficient at that. CommConnect, social-emotional learning tool. Screencastify allows teachers to record lessons, and, and it's, it's really a very cool product that Chris, Chris has been very supportive of in getting that rolled out. Lightspeed Relay, you've heard a lot about our filtering, and we'll, we'll talk more about that. You know, that, that had some, the biggest benefit of that was just really gave us the ability to have kids that are home have their devices filtered. And then we've created a remote student access, which allows students in classes with special software, like, you know, a lot of kids use Adobe Photoshop and things like that. Well, that's licensed for machines. So kids from home now can VPN into a machine in the district, access that software and use it at home. And then we've got some PDF reader software. But so that was a lot to tell you, but that was just, the point is, it's just a lot of stuff we've implemented. So now what have we been hearing? So just picture this, all these teachers arrive at school with all this new stuff. And one of the first things they do is they go to their teacher station, and they start practicing and thinking about, how am I going to make this remote learning thing work? And, and many of our teachers came back and said, well, now that I've practiced this, I think I need another piece of software, maybe another piece of hardware, and a little more training. So then we throw on some more stuff that we're, that we're doing to make that work. And despite all the effort this summer, there's just, that's just the nature of the beast. You know, right before game time, you realize, oh, you know, I really could make this tweak or that tweak. The ClassLink single sign-on was great, or is great, but there's still some different difficulties signing into programs, you know, as we transition to this new software. And for example, people signing into Seesaw through ClassLink, they, they had, you know, some difficulties. And, and so what was happening was people were migrating from the free version of Seesaw to the paid version of Seesaw, and the rostering wasn't working properly. So they had some challenges with that. BrainPop, it's another piece of software we've been using for years. And that, they made changes to that, and it wasn't working well with Google. And so we, again, we're working through, we've worked through most of these, all these problems, but they've created a lot of frustration. So these are some of the things we've been hearing. School Tool, ClassLink syncing, School Tool, you know, is our student information system. Google Classroom is the, the basic framework that we're launching all of our, our online learning, just managing the classroom, whether you're online or not. Google Classroom is absolutely critical. We've actually kind of backburnered this syncing because we've had so many difficulties with it because a class within School Tool has kids in it that are in, you know, they may be coming Monday, Tuesday, maybe they're coming Thursday, Friday, maybe they're in, some are fully remote, some are not. So it's such a blend, it's hard for School Tool to share that information effectively with Google Classroom. So we're going to, for the first semester here, I think at least till the first semester, we're just going to take a break on, on trying to make that one work. Filtering with the cloud-based filter, you know, it's been, it's been great, it was essential. We really didn't have a choice, we had to do this. It helped us with our, with our bandwidth, but it blocks some sites erroneously. Now, we've definitely stabilized the situation, and we've, we've gotten those sites opened up, and we've created opportunities to open sites quickly and, and whatnot. And then I, then finally, we heard a lot of noise about Zoom, and we've all been on Zoom calls. I'm sure every one of you can relate to. You're on the Zoom call, and it freezes. Well, you know, we're a bunch of adults, so when it freezes, we just wait a second, and we realize, yep, you know, Mike's going to be back in a second when his, when his, when his screen unfreezes. Well, if you're a teacher and you've got a whole bunch of little kids in there, and it freezes, you know, it's all about attention span and about retaining their attention. And, and so very frustrating for teachers when they've had those kind of problems. And our, our technology department has been constantly tweaking Zoom, tweaking the settings, and making it work better and better, and I think, I think it is working better. But as I, as I mentioned, we're also moving forward with Google Meets. We want teachers to have that tool. And Google Meets actually does work better on Chromebooks, so, you know, we're, we're moving forward. So this, the purpose of this slide was really to say to you, hey, what have we been hearing? It's a lot, we've been hearing a lot, and a lot of it has to do with the changes. I'm happy to report, we're responding very well to all the things we're hearing. So this is kind of our response here. So we've got tech coaches in the field. They've been taking feedback from staff, and they continue to use Google Slides and send out tech tips and tricks. And they're doing a lot of hand-holding and doing video tutorials, and they're delivering individual and team coaching. And they're just amazing people that are just all over the place, doing a great job servicing, servicing our teaching staff and, and supporting them. Tech TAs, God bless them, they have been on the front line, doing a lot of the in-person support in turn, you know, at each building, except we don't have one at North Syracuse Really Education Program, but all the other buildings. They've been answering the tech hotline and emails to provide technical support to both parents and to students. Remember, the parents are home with these kids, and if they've got a challenge, they've got to have quick answers to the questions, and the tech TAs have done a great job on that. The tech department has been addressing all the issues reported to the portal. To give you an example, we've had 777 tickets closed between the TAs and the tech, and the tech coaches and, and tech. They're answering calls to the help desk. We have had 1,246 emails that we've dealt with, with parents. So it's a lot of communication. And what's exciting about it, very candidly, is the volume just went down every day. You know, so we got a lot of calls, addressed the problem, did a really good job communicating it. And then every day, things have gotten better and better. And then the tech department has been working really closely with the tech coaches and the tech TAs and directors and vendors to address any technical issues. And they've, they've really done a great job, I think, of rallying around and, and addressing concerns as they come up. So I think, I think a lot of changes resulted in a lot of issues that I think we've responded well to. And it's, it's a, it's a constant process, but I think, I think we're, we're doing the best we can to, to really get the most out of our technology for the benefit of our teachers and students. Couple of other considerations. I, I put these words, Dan said to me, do you want to say frustration and struggles on this slide? And, and the reality of it is just true. You know, we've had real issues that have frustrated staff since the opening of school. However, very few of these issues could have been avoided, given the magnitude and speed of change that was required to actually open school. And so, you know, the only thing I can say is, you know, that we've overcome a lot of these challenges, and we're feeling good about it and feeling better every day. Communication, one of the things we learn is that you've got to communicate early, consistently. We've got to repeat our communication. We've got to be very patient in dealing with people because sometimes we're solving the same problem over and over again with just different constituencies. But we've, we've done a great job with the communication. And this educational technology, and I would say this about all technology, it's not stagnant. It's not like, ah, we figured that out. Well, tomorrow, there's going to be something new that comes along. And so we're constantly making changes and adapting, and it's, and it's that fluidity that we aspire to, the ability that the organization welcomes change and welcomes these challenges. And I think our, our, our organization really has stepped up. They're not afraid to try new things and implement new things and to make new things work. And I think we're seeing that across our system. I will say this, again, I'll go back to our tech coaches. The professional development they've done since March is amazing. They've provided numerous opportunities for PD. They offered 20 summer sessions filled over 630 seats with virtual PD, again, focusing on the quality of digital instruction. And, and they're continuously working on new PD to respond to the needs of the teaching staff. And so those are some of the other considerations. Finally, overarching a lot of all this new software and the environment we're in right now, we've had to really work hard to make sure that we're in compliance with ED Law 2D. And Chris, as our, as our ED Law 2D person has, he's been our data protection officer. He has really overseen that and made sure that we're not bringing on software that puts at risk personally identifiable information. And this has been particularly, a little bit of a pressure seat now, as we've implemented so much new software. We've had to really make sure that, that we're doing it with fidelity so that we know we can support what we're doing and we're not compromising information. And this just gives you some of the critical elements of the process of bringing new software into, into North Syracuse. So I know I just whipped through a lot of information very quickly, but I, I just wanted to, I hope, I hope you're feeling, our goal was to give you a very transparent, candid view of this, of the world of technology here at North Syracuse. And I know Mike deals with a lot of schools, probably, at a lot of schools are probably in a very similar state. But I have the utmost confidence in our tech department, our tech TAs, and our tech coaches, as well as our teachers and the folks in the buildings that are embracing the technology and, and leading the way. And so that, any questions or comments on technology? Thank you for listening.
Can I just say, I, what an awesome presentation, what a great job you've all done, you know, to provide new resources for our teachers, they can, that'll help them with their remote. I just wanted to know, licensing, the software licensing, is there limitations to the amount of users that can use it?
Yes. Yeah, like, I'll just use an example, every single piece of software has a different, a different methodology. But, you know, generally, like, for example, we're just doing this Google Meets, and it's really basically about the size of your organization, the number of users, and you pay a licensing fee for that. Now, one of the things that Chris, Chris and I have both embraced, we've all embraced is licensing as much of this through BOSsies as we possibly can, working with BOSsies and trying to get aid. And, and, but yes, we have to watch the number of seats that we buy and, and, you know, how we're, how we're deploying it so that we don't spend too much. We, one of the pieces of software we did buy, I didn't highlight, tracks how much we actually use the software we buy and who uses it so that we can be better at licensing. Because everybody says, oh, and I'm guilty of this too. Someone says, hey, do you want that software? And I go, oh, yeah, I'd love to use that. A year later, I haven't used it at all. So if we can, if we can be really good at knowing who needs it and who doesn't need it and who's using it, we can license the right amount of seats, and that saves us, saves us money.
No, it's very expensive, but I just wanted to make sure that every teacher who wants to use apps and software, that they're able.
Absolutely. We're committed to that, especially in this environment where it's just so critical.
And then another question I had was, I know with the whole pandemic, we've been able to reach out and work with other school districts to see what works best. And, you know, it's, we're all new in this venture. So are we able to benchmark with them for these new software tools and what's working?
Yes, there's two things that are going on. There's a data protection officers meeting that meets every month at least, and Chris is in that, and I've been attending that. And so we're talking to tech directors and- And so we're talking to tech directors and, and other leaders in all the districts in our BOSEs. And then there's a, then there's actually a tech directors meeting. So we, we meet regularly and we talk to BOSEs about what they're doing and other districts about their experiences. I think this has really brought us all a lot closer together, much more dependent on each other's intelligence about what works and what doesn't work. And so we continue to work very closely with BOSEs and, and collaborate with other districts wherever possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our final presentation is an update on our capital projects. Ms. Irwin, thank you.
So we've got a little bit of ground to cover. Start with our roofing projects. So Gillette and Allen Road have been done for several weeks. The junior high is expected to be completed this week. The last piece of that project, the roofing is done, the brickwork is done. We are waiting on the ladders to show up so that we can get from rooftop to rooftop. Bell and Spina did reduce the expected change order to one wall, it's ended up costing us less than five grand, we met about that a month or two ago. So that is going to be just that one area of concern, which is now complete, and those remaining wall sections are in good enough shape that they're confident we can wait for a future project to deal with. Closing that out and we're moving on. We have some, some funds left in our budget from the Roofing Referendum. Bell and Spina has identified roofing work at both CNS and Allen Road that they feel is most prudent to be done. So letters of intent went out this week to SED so we can get some project numbers and we'll be coming back out in the next couple of weeks with requests for Seeker and Ship-O and things like that, so we can move forward with some additional phasing on the roofing work. Bay Road, you see some of the pictures here, we're making some really good progress out there, okay? The roofing is just about all dried in. PVC is going in, down on the kindergarten wing now, it's actually already down in area, classroom areas, what we call Area C in the back of the building. Mechanical and electrical rough-ins in the new kindergarten wing are well underway and almost complete. Down in the crawl space as well, trying to get that work done. And we're doing a little bit of lead abatement. We've got some exposed columns that are going to remain exposed, they're going to be refinished and painted as part of the project, so we're taking care of some of those things. We also have some connecting points for the attachment of the walls and the roof sections that need a bit of abatement along the way. Down in the crawl spaces, mechanical, electrical and plumbing is, is pretty much demoed and done for this phase of the project. All of our mechanical and life safety systems were up and operational prior to school starting. We did discover today that we have a horn strobe need in the front of the building now that we have kids playing out front, so we're going to be adding that this week. And the connecting corridor has been in place and they have a plan for temporary heating when we need it here in a few weeks. Wetlands work, we got our permit in the last week and a half or so. Our subcontractor Cunningham Excavation is going to be getting ready to start that work in the coming week, so that's going to get underway. That's going to involve some excavation and some tree removal behind the property to accommodate drainage. I don't know if you all remember that, but our grade level back in the swamp is about three feet higher than our pipe invert for the outlet going into swamp. Digging that out and making some changes there. Coming up, October 12th, we are expecting arrival of our air handling equipment to go in the crawl space, so we'll see a lot of our duck work begin then. We'll finish up those mechanical and electrical rough-ins and move to that back Area C, which is lagging just behind the kindergarten wing. And we're hoping to have all of the prep work done and be ready for drywall and finishes before Thanksgiving. Right now, we are targeting winter and spring break as possibilities to turn the kindergarten wing over and potentially expedite some additional spaces for, out of Phase Two. So all goes well, we'll be making that shift and up some spaces that are in the back of the cafeteria wing, closest to the construction currently, and moving some staff into these new kindergarten wings. Really haven't had any issue with material related to COVID. We've been very fortunate and we've been very fortunate on manpower. We actually have a very well-staffed project right now with a lot of quality professionals. We are a bit behind on coordination drawings for the sheet metal, but the contractors have been working very closely together and we're not expecting any significant issues. They're buttoning, buttoning that up right now as we speak and that work will be going in along with the equipment on, in mid-October. Come November, when we meet again next, we expect we'll be fully dried in the kindergarten wing, we expect to be, have exterior walls up and be working inside the back classroom areas. Crawl space work will continue. Plans and drains should be completed. And one of the things we're exploring right now is timing for the playground, okay? So we're strategizing now to minimize the downtime for the playground and maximize green space for the kids come spring. So we're working on that and I'll have more to report once we finalize those plans. Speaking of playgrounds, Main Street, you can see some great shots of our new playground at Main Street here. It is substantially complete. We do have some asphalt work to do to create an access ramp to get to it. It is about six inches above the existing asphalt to access the playground nearest the building. So that work will go in conjunction with some parking lot repairs which are needed in the coming week or two. We're hoping to get that wrapped up before the end of the month of October. All the other playgrounds are now open for use across the district, so kids are excited to be out there using those. And just a little shot here for everybody, long-range planning. So our Roofing Referendum is basically coming to an end, we've got one phase left that we just discussed. We're in the process now of completing our 2020 building condition surveys. Just in the last two weeks, we've been, gotten our final approvals on a grant from NYSERTA to complete Level 2 energy audits and assessments for all of our facilities. Got a lot of great information coming together right now, we've got a lot of work that was done back in '07, '08, 2012. And time to put some of that information to use and reassess the educational adequacy of our facilities and give some careful consideration to tomorrow's educational needs. So we're working hard right now to present a process for long-range facilities planning to you. So we're trying to wrap our heads around that, get a good plan together to present to you guys and have some more information in the coming weeks. Thank you very much for your time and I'll let you guys get back to the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Okay. Okay, we are at the point of Board of Education Committee reports, I know we just did those, but I'll give you the opportunity, Ms.
Our policy committee is meeting tomorrow, September 29th at 5:00 PM. I have recently learned that we do, we have found a new student rep and her name is Melanie Duru, did I pronounce it correctly? And I'm looking forward to meeting her tomorrow. And we still are looking for another student rep.
Thank you. And Mr. Crabtree, you have the date in October still, right? So I won't make you?
Yeah, it's October 28th, 5 o'clock, but I'm asking, I haven't sat down with Connie yet to work on the agenda, so I'm asking Terry and our new member Matt and our president, Paul, if you have any ideas along with Dan and Don, please forward them to either me or Connie, because where do you want to go with this committee? There are a lot of different avenues this year that we could look at with what's happening in our country and our state, but I really want some direction from you people. So if you, we've got a little time here to get back to me or Connie about where do you want this committee to go.
Okay, thank you. Did you have an OCMBOSEs report for us, Mr. Crabtree?
Again, are there any questions or comments from board members about my report? Okay, there's just one item I want to talk about, I'll have quite a few things to talk about next month, some good things are happening. But one of our board members, Miriam Wazman, who represent, well, she was from Fabius Pompey, but she represented Lafayette and Tully, has resigned due to movement out of the district. So we're, when you have a small district, they work together and they rotate, so this time it's Lafayette's chance, they have stepped forward. And so they have nominated Ronald Shawn Rayburn. Tell you a little bit about him, he graduated from Lancaster Bible College in Bible Studies and English Liturgy and so forth. So what I'm asking the board members, if there's any concern about Mr. Rayburn representing Lafayette, so that Connie can call, our district clerk can say that we're supportive of this person being on the board. So are there any questions or concerns about this new board member? There will not, we changed the constitution last meeting and so the vote will be in April, that we vote here on new members or past members, so there will not be an election, we just would like to have support of this gentleman.
What were the, you said there were three districts combined?
Yes, Fabius Pompey, which Miriam represented, but now it rotates this time to Lafayette.
Is there a third district that's?
There is Tully.
Tully, okay.
But it's, before you can pass, and Lafayette's passed before, but they're not passing this time, they would like to have a member on, on the OCMBOSEs. So he, you know, he's involved in marriage and family counseling and he's, I believe, Presbyterian Church, right there in the four corners of Lafayette. So I'm just, I guess I'm asking for the support of him to be a member of the?
I'm just curious, how long, do you know how long he's been in the Lafayette?
I do not know. Someone told me he was a write-in. They didn't have, I don't know that for a fact, but somebody told me he was a write-in. My second cousin is a teacher there at the high school and he says he's very supportive of the community, involved in the community, very caring person.
I, I don't have any concerns, plus I know you'll be there for us.
So I would like Connie to just send something to our district clerk saying that we're supportive of this person. Thank you.
Superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Okay, from the last time we met, you can see athletics and activities have restarted and I see every day students that are in cross-country running past my window at the end of the day and it's just good to see students getting together outside and having some activity. Some of the other things that are going on is, the state asked that we take attendance now at the start of the school year and it's been one of those things, trying to do it and how do you do it? They really didn't give guidance to it, they just said you had to do it, and it's been very taxing on a lot of the teachers. And so what we've figured out and with Donna Marie's support, for the secondary right now, Donna Marie's going to be able to merge some different, from ClassLink and School Tool and be able to grab and do the attendance for the secondary schools. At the elementary, that'll come to pass around October 16th, once we have all those elementary students with their technology, and she'll be able to do that for the district. So they're making that move and that should help some for the staff that are trying to work on other things and that way the attendance piece doesn't take time out of their planning and instruction. As everyone knows, with the communication that's gone out, there are multiple letters that went out regarding recent positive case and we are dealing with those and working with the health department. And the health department has been responsive to us and helping us and providing guidance and back and forth with the communication, so there's always more to come, but sometimes things are very fluid and change from, from hour to hour. One of the things I did want to bring up is we've had several concerns about lunches, especially at the elementary level, at the secondary level more so, they're able to get hot meals. And Mr. Keegan, if you want to just take a second to, to comment about some of the things we're looking to do?
Sure. So we, we have received some complaints predominantly around the fact that we're serving cold meals in the classroom to our elementary and middle schools up through sixth grade, our seventh graders are eating in the cafeteria, but they're still eating cold foods. When you don't have a large offering or selection, you know, it's hard to meet the needs of, of all the kids. You know, kids don't necessarily like what's for lunch that day. Most of the kids would prefer a hot meal and we have some big favorites, whether it be our pizza, our chicken fingers, our chicken patty sandwiches, or, you know, there's some things the kids love to have and, and so we're looking at ways we can possibly provide hot food to the classroom. Now, I just want to remind everybody, the reason we're serving food in the classroom is we're trying to limit kids' exposure, we wanted to make sure that we kept kids in a tight cohort so that they, they weren't interacting with a lot of other people in the building so that we, we could avoid any potential spread of COVID. We are exploring the hot bags that maybe like an Uber Eats driver or a pizza delivery guy would use, so that perhaps we can be bringing some hot food to those classrooms. And so Wendy Swift, our food service director, is working on that. In the meantime, I just want to assure everybody that the meals we're serving meet the requirements, the nutritional requirements, caloric requirements, and, and they are, you know, Wendy has put a lot of time in with our nutritionists to ensure that the meals, you know, meet those standards. Having said that, we are also understanding that they don't, everybody doesn't like the offering and we're going to work diligently to expand that. We did bring some meals in, I don't know if every board member had a chance to see the meals, we brought today's yogurt meal in, as well as the, the turkey hoagie meal, so people could see that. And we welcome you to take those home and sample those. And, and again, I just want, I want you to know, you have our commitment, we recognize, as we've said every year when we present the food service budget, it's first and foremost about providing nutrition to the kids because we believe nutrition is essential to their learning and, and it's very disappointing to us if a kid doesn't take the breakfast, take the lunch, because we know that that means they're hungry and if they're hungry, they're not learning as well as they could be. So we'll continue to work to make that situation better. Any questions or comments?
I did read in one of the letters, something about processed meats, and I can understand a parent being upset about processed meats because they're not healthy. Was that the only alternative that day and was it just an?
It would have been one of the components of a meal. So the meals all have, you know, fruits and vegetables and, and protein and so there's many components to the meal, that would have been one of the, one of the components. I think the, again, the nutritionists looked at all of those, at all of those meals to make sure they met the, the nutritional requirements, but yes, I saw that, that complaint as well. Any others, any thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, routine action items, if I could get, I'm sorry, well, that was, that was still under Mr. Bowles' report. I'm guessing we have some Board of Education comments?
I have a real positive one. I walk every morning and it's getting later and later, but I was walking about 11:30, might have been a little bit before that, and I noticed a young man standing at, on my street. And I noticed him the day before, so, you know, I don't like to get troubled by talking to kids, you know, when you're walking and so forth, but I said, young man, I said, you happen to be an OCMBOSEs student? And he said, yes. I said, well, I'm, you know, I let him know who I was, and I said, what program are you on, construction technology? But what I am really praising is our district's transportation, that you are picking these children up. If they were, if we were doing this regularly, they would be at the high school and then they would have a bus, but you're going district-wide and, and busing our BOSEs kids and I think that's amazing. So our BOSEs kids go every day, five days a week, and you're, you're picking them up and I see that he's dropped off about quarter after two. So congratulations to Matt Conti and his group for doing this, I just, I think it's amazing. And I don't think all the school districts are doing this and it's making the program work. Now, my negative thing is, as I walk on Allen Road on the beautiful sidewalks, people don't know what 15 miles per hour is, and it's gotten worse. It's not 10, or 20 miles, it's not 25, they're going 30, 35 miles an hour. Just the time I walk. 35 miles an hour. Just the time I walk by Allen Road, whatever it is, two minutes, 10 cars went by. They were all, everyone was speeding. I know Betsy's over there in the morning, and I think I'll go over and just have a little talk with her, but it can't be happening. And it's the middle of the day. They're zooming through that. George and I have talked about this before, but it's really bad. I don't know if they don't think there's kids around, but that can't be happening. So that's just a real concern. I don't know what it's like. Other schools, I went by Gillette, it's, I believe, 25, 30 there. I can't, and everybody's obeying the, obeying it. But by Allen Road, they're speeding.
But we'll have to talk to the town. And usually, when they put an officer over near a school after a period of time, I think the locals start to.
But I haven't seen anybody this year sitting in that parking lot.
We'll have to place a call on that because that does happen. There usually sometimes is an officer on South Bay before Gillette, and that kind of slows people down. I'll see an officer from the village over by St. Rose on that road, and it does make people pay attention. So we'll have to make that call.
Thank you, Dan, because it's, it was, it was at least ten cars. I couldn't believe, they were just as fast as they could by the school. That should not be happening.
Thank you.
I have a question about that. How come some of the schools have the flashing yellow lights and some do not?
That's a town thing.
I mean, so Make Sure Road does not have the flashing yellow lights either. They're speeding.
We can ask the question.
Good reminder to slow down.
Okay, thank you. Routine action items now. Okay. Consideration of approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of the Board of Education for September 14th, 2020. If I get a motion, please. Motion from Terry, second from Mark. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. If I get a motion, I'd like to combine items B, C, and D. They're a consideration and classification of the disabled students for, by the, excuse me, by the District Committee on Special Ed, Special Ed Preschool and Home Instruction. If I get a motion to group those, motion by George, second by Matt. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Acknowledgement of business reports, if I get a motion for that. Item E. Mary, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Question action items, recommendation to abolish one full-time equivalent energy management specialist and create a 1.0 FTE maintenance. Mary, second from Matt. Any discussion or questions on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Recommendation to create a 1.0 full-time equivalent ENL teacher. Motion from George, second from Mary. Any dis?
You know, we just added, there were seven students that moved in within a two-week period at the secondary level, but I did see that there was one that did move. The total was somewhere in the neighborhood of 160 to 166. This would make either nine or 10. We've added a new ENL teacher almost every year for the last six years because of the influx. And it's not just about the number of students, it's about the minutes required, depending on their level. So a beginner versus someone that's expanding or commanding is quite different as far as the minutes needed.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Acknowledgement of gift, if I get a motion, please. Motion, Mary, second from Mary. Questions on those? You see the three listed before you? None, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Thank you. Item D, surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment. Can I get a motion? Motion from George, second from Mark. Any questions there? We have some school buses, you can see, in this, that are marketable. Make a camper, maybe, if you get one at an auction. Paint it up with the different colors and flowers. Anyway, I'll stop here. Any other questions besides my babbling? I'm thinking of the Mystery Machine, too, from. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Strategic Personnel Report A, if I get a motion. Motion from Terry, second from Mark. Any questions on that report? None, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Support Staff Personnel Report B, a motion, please. Motion. None, all in favor. Opposed. Administrative Personnel Report C. Okay, any other questions? None, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, at this time, I do not have a motion for executive session. If there's a board member that has a need or wants to make a motion for executive session, just state the cause or reason. Yes, sir.
I get a session, but if we don't go to executive, or before we back up and talk about a topic that we talked.
I suppose as chair, under Roberts' rules, I can allow that. I'm going to. And if somebody wants to challenge the decision of the chair, then that would require, I think, a simple majority to overrule that. It's granted.
Thank you. Just a simple question I had. You were talking about future construction plans and everything else with climate and push for green environmental. Have they been coming up with stuff for schools to go greener? Or have you heard anything about that? Because that's, you know, 10 years, 15 years down the line. That may or may not be a thing.
Yeah, to answer your question, sustainability is a big portion of our future planning. So it is an area we'll be discussing as we look at our long-range planning, and it's a factor that will be in consideration. Additionally, when you talk about green, you know, you look at the Bear Road Elementary School, that building was designed to be a net-zero building. So it is everything that would involve net-zero short of the solar component. We are doing solar hot water there, but we are not doing any solar power production. So that's as close as we've gotten as a district so far. It's an initiative that my predecessor was very passionate about and that we will continue to look at very closely as we move forward.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to return to that.
You're welcome. Thank you for that question. So I see no motion for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion from Mr. Brazio, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Favor of adjournment. Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.